Certainly respects our businesses. I'm not one who wants in any way to cause unnecessary problems for any of our businesses, racetrack, whatever. But you take something like most of the businesses you mentioned, they've been there for years and years and years. And people are used to those. If somebody moved into that neighborhood, they knew that was there when they moved in. But for something just to start up and disrupt the peace and calm of an entire area, neighborhood, anybody who lives near or where it's happening, that's a different situation. And I think we can cover hopefully all of that in whatever ordinance we come up with. And an ordinance needs to be fair and consistent and consider the various aspects of it, like you mentioned. What have I missed if anything?
I think we'll just review that and bring it back.
I agree.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, Mike, just a couple of comments. One thing I kind of worry about with these kind of things is, you know, if we start making changes and if we get it to, I guess you would say, black and white, like that one that's enlisted in our folder here that's in 2010, where you start measuring decibels and doing all that stuff, it kind of takes away your flexibility. So I guess my first question, in your opinion, is the one we've got pretty close to what we need. I mean, this issue with the gun shooting, it seemed to me like not too long ago, we had another situation where that was occurring. I think it's different than the one you're talking about.
I think it is different.
Then either you talked to them or something happened that they quit doing, shooting as much or something, I think.
It's the same location.
Oh, it's the same location?
It stopped for about three months.
Did it start back up?
Yeah.
Like Rosebud or something like that, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, I'm sensitive to the idea that you can't just run a gun range beside somebody's house all day long, but I really would like for you to take a hard look at this and so we don't have unintended consequences if we start changing it too much. I mean, it needs to be, have enough flexibility that you guys can go out and enforce it without...
The key, in my opinion, is just discretion and being reasonable. And I think I can work with Ty to make sure everything's worded like it should be to give the discretion that's needed for each event.
Okay. So what about, and then the other question, what about municipalities? Say, we have a noise ordinance, do they have their own individual ones, each of them? They do? And do we have any issues with what they do versus what we're doing, or have you?
We don't have no influence on what they do, that's up to their board. But a lot of times they'll follow suit unless they disagree with the noise ordinance itself, but...
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, I would just like for you maybe get with Ty and go back. You've got to enforce this, you're really the enforcer of it, right? Once it gets approved, so I'd really like to have something that you think is workable that you guys could do some research and come up with and address the issues like Mr. Walker's talking about without having it do unintended things we don't want it to do.
The key is making it work in a rural county.
Yeah.
May I have a quick comment?
I'm finished.
Sheriff, you just reinforced my thinking as far as why we would need an ordinance, because you went out and tried to be reasonable and work with a particular person, here it is just a few months later, and problems here, maybe still here, maybe worse. So when you try to be reasonable and fair and use common sense and it works for a little bit, then doesn't work, it gets worse than maybe even before, that's where we would probably need something with some teeth in it.
If you compare the noise ordinance from '94 to 2010, what was drawn up, it gives us a little more to work with.
Now, like Mr. Morris mentioned, I don't know about measuring decibels, I don't know if you need your deputies running around with whatever measured decibels mean. You can tell if something's disturbing the peace above beyond what it should be. If we can somehow incorporate that into the wording of whatever we come up with, that's a judgment factor, but I think your deputies generally would be able to use good judgment and enforce it.
And make it work out.
Sounds good, I figured you would, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
I think I ask the board to give me time to do the research on the business before I bring it back and get that part taken care of and see where we are.
You can just let me know when you're ready and we'll put it back on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
If I'm going to be involved, it needs to be fairly quick. If I'm going to be involved, it needs to be fairly quick. Well, that's fine, but wait until...
It's only taken 10 years to get to this point, so...
Sure is.
I will move on to item G, the grant funding. Ms. Shannon Shaver?
So we've been accepting the grant applications from the small businesses and the nonprofits throughout the county for the whole month of September, and we received 43 applications total for the grant funding. 18 of those were from nonprofits and 25 were from small businesses. I'm going to pass down just a breakdown of the applications, they're just numbered and the amount of funding, and then you'll see some spaces on there where some, there were only a few that did not receive funding. And so we met last week, the Grant Review Committee met on Thursday and Friday. Funding was recommended for most of the applicants at either their actual loss or requested amount.
It's two shoes.
We went with the lesser of the two on that one, and we used that logic across the board for all the applications. The applicants that did not receive funding were, a couple were due, they actually had a gain in their revenue, or other funding had been received, pretty substantial in some cases where they'd already received a grant. There was only one application not funded for lack of information, and we made three, I made three attempts to contact them, try to get their information that we needed, and I never could get them. The original requested amount that we asked to use for the funding was $500,000, and that's of course out of that CARES Act money, that's COVID money, no county money, because we were unsure of the number of applications that we would get. So after looking at all this and making cuts, we've still come out over that $500,000, which we thought we might, so our total at this point is $575,713. And we're asking for permission from the board to have that additional funding from the COVID money to fund those applications at that amount, that would require an additional $75,713 from that money. So if the board's in favor of that, we'd like to get that approval so we can get those funds out to the recipients that need them. And then we'll also be notifying the few that did not receive and the reason and why they did not receive.
And Commissioners, I can also tell you, I was on this board along with Mr. Oakley, Julia, Mr. Carter, and Tori.
Tori helped too.
Or as you like to call him, Terry, whatever you may ask.
Tori was a big help.
I can tell you, we went through these things, took our time, really studied over them. Some people really got hurt in this, and the good thing is a lot of these nonprofits and stuff, we made sure they was taking care of what they was looking at as well, we just didn't throw a number out there for them. So this was looked in great detail, we spent about, it was half of one day and then a few hours another day, so we kind of went through it. And I can tell you, I'm in favor since this is from that COVID money, it's going to be spent by December 31st, I'm in favor of going ahead and putting this $75,713 back out to our citizens that need our help. Without opening up any questions, Congressman Walker?
First off, I appreciate the work that you and the others involved have put into this, it's no easy task. I sort of toyed with the idea of maybe being more involved, and I thought, wait a minute, I'm trying to make my life forceful, not more complicated. So appreciate the work all of you did. I'm on board with the additional funding, I think we had a million or so to work with initially.
Total, yes.
No, I'm referring specifically to the amount the county had after we'd given money to municipalities, and we ended up with something around a million or so.
Yeah, it was actually about 1.4, and then now after some like this and this funding, and then some of the things that'll be spent, like the ventilators tonight, things like that, would put us right around 800 to 850,000 still left.
Still left. Well, the reason I'm looking at that is even if we add the additional $75,000 or so, we still have funds left to work with for other needs.
Yeah, and like tonight, we talked about giving, putting some of that money in for the DSS applications for energy assistance and rent assistance too, so that, we'll see what that turns up to, I think that'll be some of that funding too.
Right.
So can I ask, you've got 43, $575,713, and the committee came up with these numbers, I just want to ask, will the commissioners be made aware of who this is or is that confidential information?
I spoke with Ty about that today, we're going to actually, when this is finished and we're approved and we give them their checks, we're going to send them back every piece of information they sent to us, so they have all their information back to them. So as far as right now and with Ty's guidance, we're going to keep their information confidential.
Okay. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
More questions, comments on this? Commissioner Morris?
Yeah, it looks like you did a logical job here to me, you know, there's some numbers are way bigger than others, but I suppose that's based on what you've got.
The higher numbers, and I'll answer your question, the higher numbers are one of the businesses that were completely shut down and really, I mean, they showed the laws, it was in great detail, so...
Are the ones that didn't get any money likely to understand or not, you think?
I think so, I think either they had not, and Julia was really helpful with that, with the numbers part, I think they either had not totaled together all of their funds they had received, or maybe just some grants, you know, you don't really have to have a loss, you can just apply for funding moving forward. Some were requesting things like future things they wanted to do, not really lost things. So I think they will understand that they didn't actually suffer a loss, some actually had quite a substantial gain.
Okay.
Which is great for them, so that's good.
Not Amazon, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So is the public likely to want to know who this money went to? I mean, I'm not sure about the confidential versus nonconfidential.
Yeah, we're not sure either, I mean, I think if somebody probably makes a public records request, then we probably would have to give the information, I don't know that for sure, this is sort of a new, new subject.
... Confidential information, confidential information, what does it provide, so how do we look at it? Is that confidential?
Yeah, I don't know if somebody were to make a records request specifically for who's applied, if that would, you know, be applicable, I don't, you know...
I think they'd be curious who the money went to and how much they got, and whether that's, we have to do that or not, or whether it's the right thing to do, I'd have to think about that.
Yeah, I'm just depend on what the law is about it too, because I'm not sure on that one. But the bulk of it, like I said, 18 nonprofits applied, and they all had very valid losses of fundraisers that haven't been able to be had, things like that. The majority of your businesses were salons, some gyms, some things that really had hardships that were actually forcibly shut down with no, you know, no half capacity, any of that for quite a bit of time. Not a lot of restaurants, very few restaurants applied, but I think...
You have some restaurants, though?
Had a couple, yeah, a few, but...
Did you have, what was I going to say, I lost my train of thought. Oh, was the, did every private business that applied get something? Can you do it? Do you remember?
No, every private business did not.
So out of the...
And actually, out of all of them, only one nonprofit didn't get anything, it's because they didn't actually have a loss and their request was to expand and do something different, so it didn't really meet the criteria, they weren't missing a fundraiser, they weren't, you know, they hadn't lost anything during that.
Out of the, there are seven you didn't give it to, what's the breakout of profits versus nonprofits? Do you remember?
One nonprofit didn't get funded, all the rest of those are private business.
Yeah, there's how many, one, two, three, four, five, there's seven, so six businesses didn't get it, did apply.
The one nonprofit actually had a gain and was requesting future use money.
Oh, okay. When, I'm okay with adding additional money, by the way, and when is it going out?
As soon as we can, I'm going to, as soon as you all approve for us to use the additional funds, I'm going to do the check request forms from finance, and we'll get them out as soon as they can, I can get that printed and they can get the checks cut, and we'll notify all the recipients and those that didn't get anything.
Okay, then the last, my last question is, can the ones that didn't get it apply for a follow-up review of why they didn't get it or something, or you already plan on doing that?
We didn't really put anything in the application about that, just for them to have like an appeal write or anything. Basically, they checked the box and signed that they were understood that by applying for this did not guarantee any funding. So we don't have to, we don't have to do that, I mean, we certainly can, and I'm very willing to explain it to them, I'm going to write, I'm going to put it in print and send it to them too. But I'm also, myself or anybody on that committee could explain to them exactly how we came to that conclusion and the amount of, I think one of the private businesses had over a hundred thousand dollar gain. And that's not sliding them, that's great for them.
Yeah, that's good.
And if they, you know, I'm sure they do need things and have specific things because of COVID, but it's just hard to justify giving that funding to somebody that had that...
Yeah, I think it would probably be good to maybe just offer to the ones that didn't get it.
Yeah, for sure.
If they have a question, if they don't, then we go looking for them.
And a couple of those applicants that didn't get anything, I know very well, so I can very much explain to them if they have questions or if we need to take it any further we can, but I don't foresee any.
Okay. Then we can decide later if we end up having to publish the names of the company.
Right, if something happens and we have to do that.
Need to, or whatever, okay.
I think the lady at the NC program office is probably going to block my emails pretty soon for all the questions I'm asking.
We have to vote on the additional money tonight?
I'd like for you to just say, because we voted on the 500,000, so if we can just vote to add that 75,713 to fund those, you know, the approved ones.
Is everybody okay with moving that to action tonight?
Yes.
That'll give us time to start getting those checks screened out.
I have mixed feelings, but...
I know you do.
It's such a good thing, though, you feel good about it.
Yeah, they have, yeah, that's right. Look at the kids, Jimmy.
Make a motion to agree.
Okay, all right, we'll put that as item C on the action agenda then.
Okay, perfect.
Then we want to item H, Energy/Rent Assistance Program.
So that's me too, so this I just got today, so this was just kind of a general question from Stacy Elms, DSS director, just saying she saw this grant, we're talking about the grant funding, she said, do you think we could use this CARES Act funds for some programs through DSS that give the help for utility and rent assistance, they do that big program, first of December, the LEAK program that does all of the power bills, buys heating oil, wood for people, things like that. They have a pot of money that comes in for that, and it doesn't last very long because a lot of people are in need. This year, it's especially not going to last very long because they're getting extra applications, their volume's way up, she said. So she can definitely use it for that, it's, other counties have done programs through, like we did this grant program, they've done it for their public for mortgage help, rent help, utilities help, anything. But we can use it that way and funnel that money through their application process. I don't have a dollar amount because we don't really know what they're going to receive as far as application requests, but we can, when they send up the request for that, for the utility help, you know, the rent assistance, the money can come out of that fund up and through December 31st, and then it'll have to start coming out of that other pot of money. So it would just give us more money to work with for longer if we could approve to take. I don't think it'll be a huge amount of money like this grant program or anything, but it would certainly help to make our other money go further. And I could update as of after the time's over on actually how much was spent out of the CARES Act money.
Why wouldn't they want to?
Well, we can do a dollar amount.
I was going to say, do you want to say we're going to pay, or this board wants to say we'll pay X amount of dollars on?
And then we could always come back.
That too.
Yeah, and we could always come back if it looks like it's going to go way over and we still have, I just don't want to, I don't want to waste any of this funding that we've been given, I want to do the most good we can do with it for people.
Well, I feel bad, it's helped out the citizens, it's been a rough time for some people, some of them have been hard through this, the way I see it, yeah.
Jake mentioned maybe just allocating a hundred thousand dollars to start with.
I agree with that.
To that, and then we'll see where that goes to, and then, and it can stay in that same fund, so it can be used for something else if it's not used for that.
Any more questions, comments on that one?
What do we do with it, we're going to put it on discussion for next time, or what?
Well, we added it to discussion this time, Stacy would love to know that she can start using that funding so she can get those applications and sort of start funding more of those.
We'll do what Jimmy hates words and put it on action.
What?
Do what Jimmy hates words and put it on action.
You have to put on action.
I don't find things to put on action, I just, every time we move something from discussion to action at the same meeting, I have that ongoing question, is this really passing the test of urgent?
I was about to interrupt you, Commissioner Morris, it is.
Yeah, is this money, it's time sensitive to get it spent?
Is that same December 31st?
Yeah, that's a reason to do that.
Yeah, I think just, you know, and it's a huge help for them.
Well, what we got to do, let's do it.
So if I get consensus, I can add that, the energy and...
God, if you're still around, think about it.
Agree with Commissioner Langford.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion to approve it.
All right, we're getting ready to do that.
We need it to the action, so, okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to action agenda now, item A to want a code and penal convenience site operating hours, do I have a motion on this?
Yeah, I should hope for a second. I should hope for a second.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. All right. Item B, portable ventilators, do I have a motion on this?
I should hope for a second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. There were six, right?
Six, exactly, yes, yes.
Item C, the grant funding, have a motion for approval?
The additional...
Additional savings almost...
$75,713 for a total, so we're making that total now 575,713.
Second.
Discussion.
One quick question, do you want these papers back tonight from us?
No, you can keep those.
Are they like public records?
Yeah, yeah, because there's nothing on there that indicates anything about who was, yeah. It's fine if you want to say that 18, you know, I can send you that information too, where the 18 were nonprofits and 25 were for profit, and the breakdown of who, you know, how that played out.
Yeah, I was just curious, I didn't know if you wanted to keep it closer hold.
So what we're doing, what we're doing with this motion is just approving the 75...
Correction. Correction. Motion to second, any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Well, Ernest and...
Ronnie.
Well, they were kind of at the same time, so who was the actual motion?
Ernest made the second.
All right, well, item D, the Energy-Rent Assistance Program, have a motion?
To allocate the hundred thousand dollars.
Right, allocate the hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Ernest second.
And first, a motion was...
It was first, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Shannon, could you please take us to closed session?
To consider and take action with respect to the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of an agreement for the acquisition or lease of real property pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1185.
Have a motion, take us to closed.
I move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Take it closed.
Oh, we're going to use...
Oh, what kind of use?
She is.
It ain't very heavy.
Nah, it's pretty heavy. I thought she was doing it for Christmas.
I know, mate. Says I'm not a commissioner, I need some extra income.
Yeah.
Give me some clothes.